Welcome to the Troy City Council meeting for August 16, 2010. We're pleased this evening to have Mayor Pro Tem Fleming give us the invocation and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. We just thank you for life, Lord. We just thank you that since the time you created this earth, Lord, that everything you do is perfect and in order. Tonight, Lord, we just pray that this meeting will be conducted in an orderly manner, Father. We just thank you for each person here, for each person watching, Lord, and just bless this time that we have here, Lord, and the decisions that we make will be done in your memory, Lord, and honored, glorified, and all that will undertake to the extent of your precious name. Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, for the invocation. And Mrs. Bartholomew, may we hear the roll call?
Mayor Shilling?
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howlett?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Form present. This evening, we're going to begin with the presentation of the City of Troy Employees' Casual for a Cause Program for the months of May and June. The Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart is going to present a check to the Boys and Girls Club of Troy.
Good evening. It's with great pleasure, because the Boys and Girls Club is near and dear to my heart, that I'm going to present Danielle Numerosi, who is the program director, with $724 that the employees raised for dressing casually for May and June. And Danielle might want to give us a little talk about the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you then, Cindy. Thank you for the council for having me here tonight. Appreciate your donation. We'd just like to say we are wrapping up our summer program. We have two weeks left. We have been hitting record numbers this year. We're servicing almost over 300 kids daily, so we've been pretty busy. Lots of programs and activities for youth. And then, if anybody's interested, they can contact the Boys and Girls Club. We will be starting our fall program, and we have open enrollment for fall. We will have after-school homework help and tutoring, sports, fitness, and recreation program, arts and activities, and education. And if they're interested, they can check us out, web page out, or contact the club for more information. Thank you again. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. That concludes the presentations, and there are no carryover items or public hearings this evening. And so, we go right to public comment. And let me remind folks, before I call on those that have signed up for that, that this is on items that are on the agenda or items that are not on the agenda at this time. And I'll call on Marvin Reinhardt to begin. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I do something for the city of Troy every day. Even though I haven't been coming to the city council meetings, I've been talking to your bondholders and insurance companies about how safe this state is. And Troy Times has reinforced how safe this is. I've brought up this statement more than once. The street corners of this city are different. There's at least six or seven different ways you can stop at these streetlights, and this is the reason. Okay? So I did, you know, so now the insurance companies know. That's going to increase the cost of everybody in this city, because nobody can figure out how to get our streetlights all the same. Now, in Berkeley, I worked with a committee to get rid of stop signs, and we got rid of over 500 stop signs, because every corner was four-way stop. So there is regulations out there, and I don't know who your traffic people are, but the lights should be the same. And then, the headlines way back in May said you're going to close community center. Well, you can't close community center, because that's the Greyhound bus station. There's also the parking wreck in Jim. So I don't know why they even begin to talk that way. Until you fix that transit center, we need the community center for the Greyhound bus people, because that's who uses that more than anybody else. And then, when you guys said you're going to enforce stricter taxing, why don't you worry about all these people that, when they stop at the stoplight, they throw cigarette butts out the window? I think that'd be better than trying to figure out, because how does your police talk on your telephones in the car? I'm sure they reach for some type of device and talk into it. So this law is putting all your police department into it. And then, when the police decided to cut back on police, they took it from the public school system. Why? Because probably you guys don't build crosswalks for public school people, so the city doesn't feel like they should protect the schools. And I'll tell you what, our schools are more diversified today than when I was growing up. And that's basically what I have to say. And I hope Councilman McGinnis, his stepping stone towards judgeship is well underway, because, you know, I've tried to talk to this Commissioner Potts more than once, and he's hard to find. So if you understand who this guy is, maybe that's the reason the transit center. And also, you know, in the rail system area, in the transit center area, you can buy a store and live in the store. No, you can't do that in Troy. So how in the world are we going to fill up our industrial side when the Birmingham side uses all types of tricks? And now, if you look at it, all the contractors and all the architects are moving into free tax places that the Birmingham school still uses. That's in the newspapers. So I don't know how, what Troy's going to benefit from this transit center, but all I know is he hasn't paid taxes for 10 years, and we have. Thank you for your time, and I know you guys are great Americans.
And our next person to which is to speak is James Savage.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. I recently received a copy of the report requested by Councilman Howlett regarding payments to Carlisle-Watman Associates, and I assume that you all got copies. To question all of the details of this report would take more time than I am allowed and would probably leave me more confused than ever. So I will focus on one detail. For fiscal year 2008, 2009, the consulting firm of Carlisle-Watman Associates was paid $75,817.50, including in that total was $31,690 for DDA projects. For the fiscal year of 2009, 2010, Carlisle-Watman Associates was paid a total of $184,615.50. Of that total, DDA projects cost $37,325.50. When in June of 2009, I made inquiries regarding the Big Beaver, Chester Road intersection project, I was told that it was a beautification project paid for by the DDA. Well, we all know what that means, that over $2 million bill was paid by taxpayers, either city, state, or federal. My question here is, was that $69,000 consulting fee paid out of general fund or the DDA fund? Either way, I don't think we got our money's worth. In the six months that the so-called park has been completed with its wide landscaped pathways and fancy lighting, I have not seen one pedestrian, and I live in the area, so I'm near there all the time. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, at a time when we are laying people off and cutting services, we should be saving money in all aspects of the city. If we went through the DDA accounts and files with a fine-tooth comb, as you did with the building department, we might find a lot of unnecessary expenditure. And if you add together the cost of Carlisle-Watman and our city and city manager for one year, you get $400,000, and that's a lot of money for the city that's going broke. Thank you.
And I noticed that Commissioner, thank you, that Commissioner Burns is here with his daughter. I'm assuming you came because you wanted to speak, and is she going to speak too?
Can you say hi?
Hello.
Okay. So, yeah, County Commissioner Tim Burns, I want to pop in and give him my regular updates on what's going on. We have some really good news from the county. We've received several national prestigious awards for our operations. Wanted to share that with our residents. We just received an award from the National Association of County and City Health Officials. They honored our health department for using cutting-edge technology to improve reporting of communicable diseases. The county's health department put together an internet portal, which is working in partnership with the school districts around the county to make sure that they can work together to produce information that they can use to track when there's outbreaks of different diseases and other health problems going through the schools. This affects more than 220,000 students in a given year, and to date, 50% of our school districts are participating in the program, and they wanted to reflect on that being an innovative way to get communications going, not just between county employees, but between multi-jurisdictional groups like school boards in the county. We also won 17 national achievement awards from the National Association of Counties. The Department of Information Technology won an award for personal property e-file, which allows businesses to submit personal property statements online. They have won an award for the health portal that I just mentioned. They won an award for cross-boundary email texting alerts, and they won an award for a cost-reduction investment blog, which encourages employees of the county to provide information on cost-saving suggestions that we can help get our budget down. Our Economic Development and Community Affairs Department won awards for Skill Needs Assessment Checklist Program, for Design Assistance 2.0, which provides design and planning assistance to advance and promote the use of specific programming properties for local communities, and for their Business Venture Forward Series, which was a 10-week planning series to help small businesses expand and thrive. Sheriff's Office was recognized for Operation Medical Cabinet, which provides citizens a way to dispose of old or unused prescription medicine, and our Troy Police Department's working in partnership with that program. And our County Human Resources Program won an award for OAKFIT Wellness Screening Program. Additionally, our Facilities Management Team won its first-ever One of These Nacles Awards for their Green Team, which is working to reduce the county's energy consumption by 15% by 2015, and our goal is, during that time, to save more than $500,000 in utility costs for the taxpayers. Another good news is that our Oakland County Emerging Sector Program, they topped, in the first six months of this year, the investment total for all of last year. So our emerging sector program, they brought in nearly $194 million in investment to the county, creating or retaining more than 7,000 jobs through June of this year, which totaled the total investment that they brought in or retained from last year. Last year, the investment was $191 million, retaining 3,200 jobs. Between January and July, they brought in $1.93 million and created or saved 5,929 jobs. So we're working to keep moving in a positive direction with the county. Red Oaks Dog Park is a new, the third county dog park. It opened on Dequinda Road, just north of 13 Mile Road in Mason Heights. You want to take your dog out and run it without a leash with other dogs, you can bring it out there. You do either have to have a county park pass, or you have to purchase a day pass for that program. But it's another way we're working to get the county park system to put more of a return on investment for our more southern Oakland County area residents for investment we make through our county parks mileage, which I believe passed in Troy by about 76% of the vote just recently in August primaries. So thank you for support of our park system, and we're doing what we can to keep it a state-of-the-art, quality environment and facilities for all our residents. Speaking of that, for the dog lovers out there, we have our Camp Bow Wow Dog Swim at Red Oaks Wave Pool. That's going to be on Sunday, September 12. And you can bring your dog out, and it's the, they closed the pool for the year for human group, and dogs can come out, and they can swim in the dog pool for the day, and there are going to be different special events for dogs. And there's a registration fee of $10, and that includes a doggie gift bag and a T-shirt for the owner. And sorry, no owners allowed in the pool. For more information on that or any of the other Oakland County Park stuff, you can go to destinationoakland.com. My TV show is airing again this month, and it's on Community Media Network. It's on WOW Channel 18. And starting this week, it's moving on Comcast from Channel 52 to Channel 18. And that'll be on Mondays at 1:30, Tuesdays at 8:00, and Thursdays at 8:00 a.m. And this month's show has a profile of the County Parks Adaptive Recreation Program, which is a program for people with disabilities to use the swimming pools and the wheelchair basketball, and even golf, if you have a disability. And we have an update from Maureen Kraus, who's in charge of economic development for the county, working with Doug Smith, to give us some more updates on some of the things I talked about earlier, about our emerging sectors program and Medical Main Street. If you miss it on TV, you can also see it online. The show's at timothyburns.org. Also have a lot of different updates on there as well. And we just finished taping my September show, which is going to be airing at the same date as I told you, Mondays at 1:30, Tuesdays at 8:00 p.m., Thursdays at 8:00 a.m. And that's going to have Oakland County Treasurer Andy Meisner. He's going to give some advice on what happens if you fall behind on your property taxes and what you need to do to make sure you don't have an issue of potentially having a lien put on your home, or if you do fall behind, what he can do to work with you in regards to your taxes. There's going to be a conversation with Lola Aries, who's going to talk about what she's doing with our small business, is in the county, through our economic development team, to make sure they're getting the resources they need to be successful and thrive. And Bonnie Haynes, Executive Director of the Oakland County Mediation Center, will be there to give you an overview of her nonprofit organization. Just finally, just to wrap up, as maybe you know, I'm on the executive board, past president of the Troy Community Coalition, which works to prevent drug and alcohol abuse in the community. Unfortunately, between the loss of funding and cutbacks from all levels of the government, state, federal, county, and even the city, we're looking at new ways to continue to fund our prevention efforts for schoolchildren, teens, and young adults. And we're having a 2011 Chevy Camaro raffle. If we can sell 1,000 tickets, that will help meet our operating deficit for the year. And 1,000 tickets for a raffle is pretty good odds, so I encourage you to check that out. It's $100 a ticket. And again, the proceeds offset the loss of current funding and allow the nonprofit to continue its drug and alcohol abuse prevention efforts for children, teens, and young adults. If you want some information about buying one of those tickets, you can go to troycoalition.com. And again, if you ever need to get in touch with me, want updates on different things, you can visit me on Facebook, and you just go to facebook.com/timburns. Or else, you can go to the website, timothyburns.org, or you probably can just catch me around town sometimes, and always glad to help out when I can, and like to hear from residents. No? Okay. Well, bye. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing your daughter. She's been communicating with us while you were communicating. She was waving, and then she remembered she needs to wave at the audience, too, so she was waving at them.
And this is Maggie. Can you say bye-bye? Say bye-bye. No. She's a little stage-ward.
And next time, maybe you'll come and bring her twin, your son, too.
We'll see if Jack will come next time.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Is there anyone else that I missed on council comments? Okay, next, I'll go to response or reply to public comment. Is there, council members, did you have anything that you wish to have the staff respond to from council comments? Mr. Zerlike?
Just for clarification, the salary in the manager's office comes out of the general fund, and my salary and benefits are tens of thousands of dollars less than the previous person. My guess is there'll be tens of thousands of dollars less than the next person. Although, if you were to take the federal deficit and add my salary to it, it's probably close to a trillion dollars. Having said that, I'd like Mr. Miller to explain what's going on, or what has gone on, with Rochester Road.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor of Council. Rochester Road and Big Beaver Project was funded by, or is funded by, the Downtown Development Authority. And the project is more than just a beautification project. There are improvements related to accessibility and pedestrian crossings that was all brought up to most current standards. Also, the detention basin, there is a regional basin that will serve development in that area. It also was enlarged, as you recall, with the planning developments a few years previously. It was made beautiful, and a park on that location, which is part of our overall goals of our city, to provide gateways into the areas, and that's being used as an economic development tool to create a desirable place to have businesses and where people want to shop and work. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, then we'll continue on with, there are no postponed items, regular business. There is the amending of the personal property tax payment policy, which we had a study item on last, meeting last Monday. And Mr. Zerlike, are we going to have a presentation again on it, or are you ready for resolution? I noticed that we have-
We can do, it's the council's choice.
And we have some, the addition of the information that is laid on the table with regarding the chart for how many years and the amount, et cetera, based on size of the building, et cetera, that was referred to.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I had called Mr. Miller and indicated that it may be in order to provide a few examples based on the matrix, should council want to hear them. If you don't, that's fine. If you do, I'll ask Mr. Miller to explain further.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller? No? No? You all set? I think council's all set on this, based on our study session that we had last, just last week. Any, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
No, I was prepared to move the resolution.
Okay. Would you like to do that?
I would move the resolution as printed with the grammatical changes that were laid on the table tonight, and that would be for the audience's edification. In the first paragraph, to change "H" enhance to enhancing to be consistent with the other verbs there, and then in the therefore be resolved enumeration, number two would now read any real and/or personal property tax abatement at a minimum must be revenue neutral to the city of Troy. But those changes, I think all else is as printed in the original agenda packet, and I would move it. Support.
Voted by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and with the corrections as so indicated. Discussion? Questions? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howlett?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we go to the consent agenda. Are there any consent items that council wishes to have exempted? Hearing none. Could we have a resolution that approves all the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve all the consent agenda items at this time. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howlett?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have, we go to council referrals, council comments. Any council comments at this time? Mr. Zerlike, is this, should I bring up at this time, then, that you and Mrs. Bloom have both requested evaluations for August 23rd? You've requested in Mrs. Bloom for September, what was it? Pardon?
13.
13. At 6:30, so it would be just before the regular council meeting. And the reason I know is that there were papers that I had to sign in the packet, and so I thought we should make council aware of those two dates, so they could put it in their schedule. Those are regular council meeting dates, but it's the hour before the meeting.
Whatever date you select, I would request it in closed session.
Okay. That was the date that you had requested would be the next council meeting.
Are you all going to be here?
Yes. Well, except Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming has indicated that he can't be here.
Then perhaps you'd want to wait.
What is council's pleasure on that?
If there's a day in September, we can all be here. That would be better.
We have the 13th, well, let me look at my calendar here. The 13th is the first meeting in September, and that's what Mrs. Bloom has requested. So you want to go with September 20th? Do you all know 20th? Okay. Can we make a change on the papers, or will I have to re-sign?
I'll need to make the papers for you.
Okay. And I can, I can sign them at the next meeting. Okay, all right. Okay. It's fine. Any other council comments? Okay. Councilwoman Kerwin, do you have a question on the 20th?
A question on the 20th and 13th. Will both of those then be 6:30 times? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
And those will be closed sessions and posted?
Yes.
Once they've been requested and signed?
6:30. The meetings will be posted as special meetings, and then the first item and only item of business would be to go into closed session.
Okay. And that'll be 6:30.
Right. The reason I bring it up now is because of people's schedules, and I'm glad we did, because that reminded us that Mayor Pro Tem Fleming had indicated he couldn't be here on the 23rd due to previous, yes?
It might be a good idea for people to email the manager, if in fact, there are some upcoming dates that you already know that you can't be here for something, so that we can ascertain that we have a quorum for certain meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We do have a study item on the Code of Conduct, so if there are no other items, then we'll stand in recess, and we can be- We talked about code of conduct that had been requested, that we discussed what we wanted to have. And so we had several items that were given to us by Councilwoman Irwin, who gave us some things from, I think they were from other communities, other cities. And our city attorney, Lori Bloom, gave us a compilation of things that are from the Michigan Municipally Manual that I got, I found my 2008 thing. And then we have Birmingham, Michigan, information. And then tonight, we have, is this another copy of this? Or is this additional?
This is just a hard copy, yeah.
Same, okay, I brought my hard copy from my head before. Okay. And I don't know how council had envisioned proceeding with this. I have some personal thoughts about it, but I'd like to hear from everybody about what they think, how we're going to go along with this.
I'll start.
Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Beltrame?
The last time we discussed this, we talked about it in terms of ordinance, and then, much like Birmingham's is, and then appointing a committee for regulation and that sort of thing. And I have very mixed emotions about that sort of a framework. I, you know, I kind of in many ways agree with Brett Hughes. I remember him saying, "Well, wait a minute, you're going to appoint those people, so how are they going to criticize you? Because if they like their job, are they going to keep it if they criticize you?" And there is some merit to that argument. On the other hand, there has to be some teeth in it somewhere. And so I guess the discussion needs to center around where and how you want that enforcement capability.
Okay. Someone else want to talk about how they envision this? I know at one point, and some communities do have actually an ordinance, I kind of thought we could do something in a more simpler fashion. And as our city attorney has indicated, there's already things that are in our charter, in boards and committees' bylaws, rules of procedure, some of our, things that talk about certain things that have to go with conduct for everybody. And this, of course, is, what we're talking about now is just for us. And in looking at some of the more detailed things that other communities have done, perhaps they felt that they needed to have something more all-encompassing. I don't see that it's actually been a problem for us here in Troy, and I think that's the reason why we haven't rushed to do something. We haven't had any examples of where some things that maybe have happened in other areas, which is a good thing. But I think it's a good idea to have something in place, just to remind all of us that are here now, and those of us that, those that will follow, that it's important to have a certain standard by which councils adhere to. So I'm really looking at something not in the shape of an ordinance, but more in something that's part of our rules. That would be, actually, there's a provision already in the charter on us self-policing ourselves on some things. And so I think that unless there were some kind of problem or situation where we had to do something more definitive, I think that that's already called for in what's in the charter. Well, that's just my feeling, but I'd like to hear from everybody, because after all, this is a joint effort here. So anybody else have any thoughts on that, when you went through the information? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, when I was looking everything over, and this being the first time, I really was taking a hard look at it, and I know that it's the second time around, at least, for some other people. But I think really kind of determining where we fall between having something that's aspirational, where we're hoping that everyone kind of takes it under notice, that these are things that they're supposed to be striving for in their mission as an elected official, all the way to the other, I guess, would be an extreme, which is enforceable. And I think kind of the best example of that would be a board of ethics. And just in the discussions that we've had thus far about boards and committees, I know that we're reviewing the structure that we have already because of the financial and time-consuming time burden that they put on the staff that we have in place. So I didn't know if it would be a good idea to outright create another board that's obviously going to take a lot of time, not just figuring out what they're doing, but then carrying out a lot of the things that are listed in the sample that we saw. So my own personal opinion is that we might at least start off with something that is more along the lines of putting together underneath our rules where we don't really have anything. The things that I've noticed that we have so far are in the charter, or they're covered by state law or campaign finance, which we've got in place. So if it were to be a starting point, because I think we do need something, that we were to put it in the form of rules, and then we can expand on it from there. I think at least getting to the point where we can agree on a certain body of language that we can put together, so it's in one place, so we can use it as reference, and then perhaps go from there, that might be the best way to approach it. But obviously, I'm curious to hear from other people that were here before, and if anyone had anything they wanted to contribute about why this was kind of, the process was kind of halted from when we looked at it in the first place.
Anybody else want to give a feeling, panel? Councilman Slade?
I don't know if we're working our way around the table, but I was kind of hoping to hear from council members that have been here before to get some input. Everything I've heard so far, I think I would tend to agree with. Initially, I would say I'm not in favor of an ordinance. I wouldn't be in favor of getting too complicated about this, but I was kind of hoping to hear from other members that have been here before to get some of their input, and if you could come back to me.
The reason that it came up years ago is that some members of council had attended the Michigan Municipally meetings where that was a topic of discussion of other communities and what they had done. And when we read through the information that talks about other cities, large communities and very small ones, et cetera, and there've been different approaches to it. So it was suggested that we have one, since we have actually had a code of conduct or code of ethics. Although there is information that speaks to things that members are to do and not to do in the charter in many different places. And I think the feeling was that we should put it all together, maybe in one page or one document. We never, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you remember differently on it, we never got to the point of actually talking about whether we felt there should be a board, a committee about it. We did mention it at one point, but I don't think there was ever any consensus on it. And so we never went anywhere with that. And then some communities felt that they just had to have everything written down, you know, to the nth degree. And I think if you look at examples from other communities, you see that. That's kind of the history of, you know, what had happened there. Councilman Slade?
Well, yeah, as I said, I mean, I come from a world of growing up where we had definite strict rules, and they were written down so that everybody knew what they were, so that there was not any confusion about what those rules and regulations were. So I am in favor of having that documented. I, you know, I looked at the end of the packet that was given to us, and I kind of liked what was near the back.
That four-page?
That four-page, last, about the last four pages. As I said, I'm really not in favor of an ordinance, and I'm not in favor of a board either. I think that's something that should be done, self-policing type of thing. So I kind of like what's near the end.
I think those were four separate suggestions, because you notice that there's redundancy in some of it and others. And a lot of it is just, you know, common sense.
Common sense.
That's right. Common sense, things that, of how a lot of people should operate, you know, in this kind of situation. Mayor Potem Fleming?
Sure.
Can you say who?
Yeah, I think seems to be pretty much a consensus that we need something, we
we can agree to it. And as far as policing it, others have a board. I don't know that we need it, but if you don't have a board, then it's, if there's a question, then how would we deal with it as a council? Is it a vote? We're policing ourselves, is it a vote, a majority? And then if there is a violation of an ethics that we agreed to, a code, what's the discipline? I think if you have a code of ethics, maybe if we're looking to put a disciplinary action, three stripes are out, or what? I don't know if that's necessarily, I'm just hoping to get up for discussion, but if you have a code of ethics and there's not some hand slapping or reminder or something, then what's it really worth? You come from, Councilman Slater, you come from an environment that's very strictly, and has to be. Fortunately, we've not had a problem. Not to say we couldn't, but I think we need it, we need to self police probably, but then we have to discern and determine, what do we do if there is a violation? How do we deal with that as a council?
Councilwoman Hurlick, oftentimes I've seen it simply as a reminder, that someone simply points out, not a three stripes are out or disciplinary, but just, you know, take a look at number six, or hey, you know, we strive to do these things, and it appears that we're veering off. And I imagine that's the kind of policing that we're talking about on some of these core principles. Now, that I think would be effective, just as a reminder.
When I look at, look at, we got permission, this is in violations of an ethics, in actual ordinance there, they talk about no sanctions, public admonition, public censure of elected officials, forfeiture of office and renewal proceedings, and disciplinary action, then they talk about municipal civil infraction, misdemeanor felony, et cetera. It's based on the fact that some communities do have an ordinance in place. And Mr. Mountney, feel free to jump in and correct it, you know, I'm just going by what I found, what I found here, that, and I don't, I agree with Councilwoman Hurlick, I don't think that it's necessary for us to have something that is punitive. If it's something that would occur, that is in violation of our charter, that is referred to in there, there are things already spelled out of what happens, so that's already there. Councilwoman Howard, you were on council when we discussed this a couple of times, did you recall, am I recalling it correctly, or is there anything you want to add on that? Do you remember when it was brought up before?
It's brought up, been brought up a few times, and, you know, I know that before I was elected to council, I was a observer for many years, and one of the things that constantly came up back in heyday of the city, so to say, was the issue of campaign contributions. I don't think that's an issue as much anymore, because, you know, everybody always wanted to make the connection that if you got that contribution from a developer, you were unethical. That, of course, is a bit of a stretch, you need to connect the dots if you're gonna make that conclusion. And I guess the issue was what has always been, what is our end result going to be? What are we trying to accomplish here? And I do like the idea of a guiding principle, so to say, that we can buy into and use that as the way we're going to conduct ourselves. I think of the Senate under, well, really, the US Senate printed about 20 years ago, it was an attitude, it was a chamber where individuals from different parties and different stripes could come together to conduct public policy. They didn't always agree, and we were not elected to always agree, but they conducted themselves professionally. And I think that's really, at least as far as I see it, the objective, the goal that we want to have here is for us to act professionally and competently, of course, and come together and form public policy while kind of shaking up the marketplace of ideas, we're not always gonna agree, but we'll be able to affect public policy. And so one thing I would add is that perhaps what we might want to do, if we're going to have is each year, perhaps ratify it, just so that we can all buy into it, because you're gonna have, obviously, a new mayor for a term every year, and you're gonna have new members of council every two years at least, and that would be a good way of just, you know, us as a unit coming together and saying, we agree, and we're going to conduct ourselves accordingly.
Okay, good comments. You know, you sought the short versions, the four, the sheet where the four shorter versions were suggested, were any of those that people thought were better than others? Since that seems to be what the consensus is, that we want to have something shorter than longer. See, some of them are, one's called a declaration of commitment, two of them are called code of ethics, and one is called code of conduct. Of course, we can take, you know, title however we want, and we can use some from one and some from another if we choose. I'm not saying one of these is complete over another. Did you, Councilwoman Bellamy?
I prefer the two that are titled code of ethics, and I don't necessarily, and they're redundant, so it's just whether you like bullets or, I like the simple sentences of the ten point, and it encompasses virtually everything that we've said around the table.
That was the second sheet, if I remember from the chances. Yes, I thought it was very clear. Again, there, it's all together on one page. I liked what Councilwoman Howard said about each year to ratify, if it, you know, like it's part of our rules of procedure, everyone want to have it, so that it reminds us, you know, like a yearly reminder, it's like, you know.
I might add if I really, as you all know, I don't like things of equal value to be numbered. I do, I have an issue with that. I absolutely have an issue with that. I just like this format. I think this is much more wordy to say the same thing.
Right. But take, you can take the number off and put bullets.
Put the little dots in.
Right, uh huh.
I mean, I, it's a pet peeve of mine, and I will be very open about it.
Yes, because one is not necessarily more important than another, and when you put them in numerical order, people tend to think, oh, the first one's the most important, and that may not be.
Yeah, maybe the first three are all, yeah.
And then it might be, inclusion in the rules, members of council will, and then have the bullets of these things. And then it was Councilwoman Howard's suggestion that we review them, maybe, a suggestion might be annually, I believe, I think it's annually, we make our declaration of property we own and those things. This might be something signed annually at the same time and kept on record, that's an idea.
None would be like this.
For that one, but in the, in the rules, it would be, but as part of our tradition of revisiting, it's like, oh, yeah, I did put my name to that piece of paper, which is just a social contract. So, does that sound like something you could do?
Just a reminder for ourselves. Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
And as someone coming in this year, the fact that we did take the extra time out to really go through rules of procedure almost line by line, I thought was extremely helpful, because it gave everyone an opportunity to kind of revisit things that they had to discuss and have some discussion, and we really made ourselves very aware of the rules inside and out, so I thought that that was very helpful, and that would be a good thing, I think, if we included that as well, so that every year we went over to like revisit it and make corrections, additions, if things change. Now that we're not gonna have an enforcing body to it, we will want to take a little bit closer look, I think, to make sure that it's evolving as the needs of the council are evolving. And I also looked through the MML handbook, and it talked about, just in general, the environment that you create to make things more professional, and luckily, I think for us, we do a lot of that, you know, without being required to do, whether it's the decorum of our meetings, the way that we address each other, the way that we're prepared and we present at the meeting. So I think if we couple what we've been doing with something that we have in writing, we would be in really good shape, so.
I know that one of the things that I've liked about being on council in the city of Troy is that the staff has always been very professional, and they have a code of standard and a code of ethics that they abide by. And as you go about, and Robin, you've probably seen, and Mary has seen it as much as any, when you attend a lot of the sub-concordium, municipal meetings, you see diverse communities, but the ones that seem to operate well are the ones that have that feeling of trust among themselves and among, with the staff. And I think that's one of the great things that I've enjoyed about Troy, is that it's always had that standard, even from its very beginnings and its inception.
And I will say that one of the things that has helped with that is transparency. I think Councilwoman Howard brought up earlier about campaign contributions and developers, that that was a cry in the community, and then we found a way to show that, and would we in fact reveal that. And then when the county went to listing all of those things almost at once, that transparency is helpful.
Right.
The more transparent we can be as a council, and the commitments that we can make like this, I think help engender trust in the community and trust at the table.
Yes, because, is there, now, are we in agreement that, is there anyone that wanted something different, other than the one, the one page that had the numerical numbers, but to change those to individual bullets? And were there any in those items that are listed there that we want to change? And did we want to have it listed as code of ethics and as something that is signed each year at the beginning? What do you all think about that? Councilman Slater?
Well, I think that's an excellent idea. Councilman Hurlick initiated by that, by what he said, and I think it's a great idea. It's the only way of reminding everybody yearly, plus the point about new members and so forth, so I think it's an excellent idea.
Are you getting the consensus?
Yes, because I was making some notes here, but I, I mean, I don't want us to, we're set and going in this direction, I'd like everyone to be comfortable with it, yet on the other hand, if people felt that there were certain things they wanted to change, this was the time to talk about that. Mayor for town, come in?
Just a quick number, five. I think we just have to be careful regarding the Open Meetings Act, it says encourage ongoing communication among council member, staff, and the community.
Within the law.
Within the law. You know, we do need to be talking, and it's okay to talk without the meeting regular. Be careful that we're not having group discussions, not making law.
Do we want to add the words within the law?
I think it's okay, I think we just have to know, as a new council member coming in, you know, we need to let them know that, oh, you don't call everybody in, or you don't...
I think when, we had that with orientation, but we also, in our rules of procedure, there's a specific mid, I don't have it with me right now, it's the one about communicating with the internet at the table, we can't do that, and then I know that Mrs. Bloom has sent out, you know, memorials to remind us about something because of the meetings act, yeah.
And I made that, she reminded me, maybe.
You know, in this day and age with instant communication, sometimes it's just...
How about, how about four on code of ethics, and the other one that's in bulleted form, maybe subs, just a thought, maybe substituting the fourth dot for number five on this, which just says encourage free expression of opinion by all council members and seek systematic communications between council staff and all elements. Would that work, councilmember Fleming, is that more what you had in mind?
No, either one will work, I think, we just have to be sensitive to the fact we're not communicating in groups.
Right.
Outside of the open meeting.
That's a good point that you bring up, and that's why we're having a good discussion on it.
I looked at the same one, I, two, because of the simplicity of these phrases, I would split it into two. If you want to encourage free expression of opinion by all council members, because that's whole different, that among, very good, semicolon, and then seek systematic communications, because if we're seeking, we're not necessarily encouraging it appropriately.
Sure, that's a great split, that gets them both in.
So that would be, instead of five, then it would be actually...
Two dots.
Two dots.
Two dots.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Very good, yeah. Yeah, that's right, I really like the simplicity.
Okay.
Good statement. I just, I like the simplicity.
Right, yeah, I agree.
That's okay with you?
Okay, all right.
Okay, yes, Councilman Slater?
I would just personally, in the, like in the declaration of commitment on the opposite page, I think, number seven, I just wonder if we should have something in there about confidential information. I think it is very important that we have.
Like beyond number one? Number one and...
So the first one is that?
Just a little bit more.
A little, just a little broader, I like the number seven. I don't have to get that wordy, but...
You could add, respect the confidentiality of privileged information and refrain from disclosing.
Yeah, and disclose, yeah.
Right, and refrain from disclosing opinions expressed.
Add it to our view. Information or opinions.
Yeah, I don't think we have to...
Express in confidence.
Doesn't matter, I mean...
Because in our, we've talked about...
Even when in public, everybody heard it, so it wouldn't be disclosed.
Any others?
Is that a substitute for number one?
Kind of an addition, just an add-on.
An add-on to the first one.
I don't know if I've finished with that one, though. I'm not really completely get it. Refrain from, what are you saying, Councilwoman Bellamy? Refrain from disclosing?
I would say any of it, but that would just be because it's simple.
Disposing what?
Any of it.
Then let me go back to Councilmember Slater, did you want to go with the second line in that one? Is that...
No.
It's, in all honesty, it's not any longer than one. It's not number six.
Right.
It's no longer than six. So if that's what you were going for, Councilmember Slater, then that's fine, you could just add on and refrain from, and everything after that.
I just like to get the refrain in there somewhere. Yep, so, one edge, that's, all of it.
So opinions expressed in confidence by each other in the manager, correcting the spelling of the manager. The manager.
I'm having trouble hearing people, because you're, oh, come for it. You want to get...
Well, except for the spelling of manager, which is now manger.
So what do we end up with? Would someone like to read back what we ended up with for the first one? Councilwoman McGinnis? Respect?
Respect the confidentiality of privileged information and refrain from disclosing opinions expressed in confidence by each other in the manager.
Are you all comfortable with that?
I'm not.
Councilwoman Howard, do you have a suggestion? Councilwoman Howarak, do you have a suggestion on how we could...
Well, I guess, I would like to know what it is that we want to say, and then perhaps we can say it better. I'm just not comfortable with the wording.
I think that Councilwoman Slater's point was...
Basically, just refrain from disclosing any confidential information and/or opinions.
Can you tell me that? Well, because this was just more specific.
Yeah, which is...
It's more specific in what, I mean, it is a binding thing, and someone says, oh, well, what are we talking about?
Well, we could even shorten it and say, respect the confidentiality of privileged information, and refrain, refrain from disclosure. Would that satisfy you, or not?
Well, my concern is that communications between the city manager and any individual, member of council, or essentially public information, unless they are FOIA exempt, or of course, anything discussed in a closed session is always exempt from disclosure. And those are already covered statutorily, and I believe in our charter through misconduct in office. And so I want to make sure that what we say is not broader than what we mean, that's my concern.
That's why I think you have to use the word confidence, in confidence. If you say that in confidence, then let the law speak for itself. But if you, if you have a communication or opinion expressed in confidence, is what it should say.
Mayor Pretzamplony?
Yeah, in that sentence, respect the confidentiality of privileged information, I guess. We're using privileged information, confidential information interchangeably. Is that what we mean? Is that one and the same, privileged and confidential? Is that the same definition? Because I'm hearing that used interchangeably. I think the intent is confidential information, but I don't know the legal definition.
I think that's one we should ask Mr....
The legal definition.
There could be a difference. I mean, if something is subject to the attorney-client privilege, that doesn't necessarily, if something's confidential, doesn't mean it's subject to the attorney-client privilege, is how I should say it. There is a difference. But Mr. Howarak suggested, information that's privileged that is shared in a closed session is already, it's covered by other laws, it can't be, so violating the meetings act. So probably, if you wanted to cover everything, you would probably use both privileged and/or confidential.
That was the only thing I was getting at, was to try and keep this expressed in confidence or confidential in here somehow.
So are we back kind of to the original language that's on here, code of ethics and not reading the table? It sounds like it. And then it's number one on this, although not really number one. The first implies that it's paramount, and I think that is a good reminder for, for new or every year to remember that, oh, that was privileged and it goes nowhere.
So where do we end up on wording? We change back and forth.
I think back at the beginning.
My question is, though, that, that doesn't cover Dame's concern about confidential discussions or opinions, which may or may not happen with the staff or a single other council member, and are typically legal. And to just leave it as privileged information, as opposed to a confidential conversation, they're, they're really very different. One is covered by statute and one is not. And so I guess the question around the table is, do you, do you want not only the appearance of allowing confidential conversations among council members, but then the necessity to have them remain confidential?
Well, the other question is, is that an ask we want to make? And is that something that we want to bind each other to?
That's my question, yeah.
So is it an ask we want to make on this?
It's gotten much more complicated.
It's like I know your intent.
Yeah.
Just to strengthen it.
Yeah, just to strengthen it with, with a little more than just privileged information, if that was it. So I don't want to get too, too legal here, or too, too wordy either, but I did think that there was a difference between privileged information and confidential communication. So that was my suggestion.
Well, my opinion is that, you know, always, if anyone says, I'm saying something to you in confidence, then I put that on a part of my brain, and I don't reveal it. But I do understand Councilwoman Howarak's concern that most information that we discuss is public information.
Right.
That was your point, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, I stand that point, too. But there are those times when there is the ability to discuss something in a confidential manner because of, and those are spelled out in, when we're going to closed sessions. So I think they are covered by law.
Me, too.
And then if somebody's saying something to me individually, in person, or on the phone, or whatever, I, I think that that just goes with, again, with common sense.
Or, excuse me, or to add the tag, if I'm saying something that I don't want Councilmember Belltramee to publish my opinion in the Gazette, then I would preface it by saying, in confidence, something. And that tag then...
Protect it.
You know what that tag is by everybody? If we just do that? I, I think we...
That would for me...
Councilwoman Slater, you're the one that brought it up. What do you think?
What do we say? What is it, Ray?
Like I said, I don't want to make this too complicated. If we want to just make it privileged information, that's, that's fine. Just leave it like it is.
Okay, so we're back to, okay, all right.
It's too complicated. Otherwise, people would say they're having conversations and don't want to disclose it. It's not everything we talk about that you couch it, say...
Right.
It could have been just something in passing, but then it becomes blown up, and it's like, huh, you know, that was just a thought, that wasn't a real issue that was currently in...
It's not privileged you can talk about. You need to make the other person aware, if you and I are having a conversation, say this is confidential.
Okay. Any other items you want to add or subtract from this list? And if you want to have it signed yearly? Now, what do we proceed from here? Does it become a council resolution then, that we put on the end of rules and procedure?
Your honor, if you like, you have a number of choices. One of them would be that we come back as early as next week, and we'll have the low-tech green item, you will, to make sure that staff has copied everything appropriately. And then if we have, as you say, the following, we make, you know, we agree with what was developed, we can put it on, or make these changes, put it back on, we can do that.
Okay. That sounds good. So it sounds good, have it be the low-tech green item, and that would give people the opportunity to... Sounds good?
Good idea, Joe. Tell us to sign them, all right? Like, I just take notes with the hours of development, whenever we have the conference, I quit taking notes if you...
She can have, she can have these extra assignments up until May and October, the beginning of October. Oh, September.
Madam, yes, Councilwoman Belltramee? One other item before we leave this. You mentioned in passing have it added to the end of the rules and procedure. I would vehemently oppose that.
Okay.
I think this needs to be a separate document, and in large part, because more freely than I'd like, we move to suspend our rules of procedure.
Right.
And I think that this is not something I ever want to have the perception of suspension.
Yes. Good point. And what I should have rightly said is that it be laid, when we have our rules and procedure, this be laid as the next item, but a separate item product. That's how it should have been.
It could be signed at that time. I mean, I don't care how...
I think your suggestion of signing it in April when we do our declaration, and then having it ratified in November when we do our council elections is great. The community sees us twice a year, in essence, reviewing this, only once and in public a second.
Right. Then I agree, yes, it shouldn't be added to rules and procedure, it should be separate. Okay. Good. Okay. That's our end of our study item. Okay. So is Hen and I, or Alda?
Thank you. Good, thank you.